I'd like to call to order the Dolphin County Board of Commissioners Legislative Meeting for Wednesday, March twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-five. We will rise for a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Ladies and gentlemen, Tom Perro will lead us in. A second pledge, yes. That's an inside, that's an inside joke if you were at State of the County last night. We are now at the part of our agenda for public participation on agenda items only. So if you have any comments on agenda items before us today, just a reminder, we are live streamed and there is a three-minute limit on public comment. Any public participation for agenda items today?
Good morning, Ona Osai Swatera Township.
Morning.
Um, just number forty-one in the matters before the long list of things that you're gonna go through today. Um, the agreement number one, agreement between Dolphin County Drug and Alcohol and Genesis Home. Um, it looks like the provider will no longer be providing staff and services to work release center. And I just have a question, if like with this amendment, is there gonna be like, is there money involved coming back? For staff not gonna be included, like we're amending the contracts so they don't have to give as much service? Um, so I wanna know if we're amending it so that we don't have to pay as much money.
Randy probably could answer. Sure. I know the answer, but she better prepare. Hey Randy, how are you?
Good, how are you?
I'm assuming you can address that, uh, that concern.
Correct, so Genesis House was, has not been providing service at the Work Relief Center for quite some time. We have another provider who is providing service and has the staff. There's no money that need to return because they weren't providing the service, so there was nothing paid out to them.
Gotcha.
We only pay out for services that are rendered and then we are invoiced.
Great, thank you, Randy. Thank you for the comment, thank you for the clarification. Uh, anyone else for public participation on agenda items own? Seeing none, we'll move on to approval of the minutes. We'll begin with the approval of workshop and legislative minutes, workshop from March five, March twelfth for legislative. Do I have a motion for the approval of those two meetings? Do I have a second?
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Hartwick, seconded by Commissioner Priest, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye, motion carries. Uh, for the March twelfth Salary Board Meeting Minutes, do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Moved by Controller Bateman, do we have a second? Second by Commissioner Priest, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Executive sessions held between meetings, Mr. Hagerty.
Good morning, on Tuesday, March twenty-fifth, the Commissioners held an executive session to obtain the advice of legal counsel regarding consideration of purchase and lease of real property, bond proceeds, changing federal policies, tax assessment, and personnel matters.
Any questions for Mr. Hagerty? Hearing none, we'll move on to Directors and Guests portion for the Pennsylvania Treasury Program Relation Manager Larry Booker.
Morning Commissioners, uh, Larry, Program Relationship Manager, PA Treasury. As is everybody's goal in this room and surely your objective, uh, one of our primary missions is financial stability for every family in Dolphin County. And, uh, the PA Treasury, we're doing that by offering program and resources to encourage families to save, um, to encourage workforce development, and to get money back into the community. Um, that starts off with the Keystone Scholars Program. Um, on this first sheet, it's at the bottom left, every kid born in Pennsylvania after two thousand and eighteen starts off with a hundred dollars for college and career training. That grows every year, um, the goal being regardless where every child starts, um, they, they have an opportunity to earn the, the career of their choice. Um, according to the U.S. Census, there's over twenty-seven thousand kids under five, uh, in Dolphin County. Um, so that's two point seven million available right now for children in Dolphin County for college or career training. Um, enrollment in that program is, is, uh, about ten percent right now, so there's a lot of families with money out there that don't know about it. Um, so asking for the Commissioner's support and, uh, and anybody in the room actually, um, to help get the word out to get people to take advantage of that program. Yes, sir.
No, I'm, I'm in the program.
Okay. Um, that moves us next to our two savings programs, the PA five-two-nine College and Career Savings Account. Uh, that's a tax advantage way to save for colleges, financial aid benefits, um, encourages to fit families to save for, for post-secondary education. Yeah, includes not only college, but trade schools, vocational schools, graduate schools, even K through twelve tuition is a qualified withdrawal. So anybody in a parochial school, you can get a tax advantage for sending your kids to schools. So also hoping to raise awareness about that. Um, PA ABLE is a savings account for individuals with disabilities, lets them save money without impacting eligibility for critical benefits. Um, allowing individuals with disabilities to work and save and not worry about losing their benefits. You know, I think we've all heard the story of the person who's only working twenty-five hours because, you know, they're scared if they work thirty, they might lose their benefits. Well, this program's gonna allow them to save and reach financial stability. And then the last program, unclaimed property, um, kinda like lost and found for missing money. There's over fifty-eight million dollars in unclaimed property attached to Dolphin County addresses. Um, in the report on page three, I give a city-by-city breakdown. It's over forty-five million attached to Harrisburg Addresses, one point seven million Stilton Addresses, four point six million Hershey, four point one million for Humblestown. I mean, I'm sure everybody in this room has somebody or knows somebody or works somewhere where there's unclaimed property. So we encourage everyone in Dolphin County to go on the website and search for their money. Um, we have staff on hand to help with that process. Uh, I mean, there's money out there for businesses, nonprofits, for individuals, everybody has money, I'm telling you, and we all need it right now. Um, in, uh, speaking Dolphin County specifically, there's money available for the county as well, too, for the city's Harrisburg. Um, so once again, we ask for your support in, in getting the word out, encouraging, encouraging families to claim that money, encouraging businesses to claim that money. Um, would be honored if, if, if the, the Commissioners would, would like to host an event, an event, um, possibly even downstairs where, where maybe the community can come out and search, and search for their staff. We've done that with other counties across the state. Um, just a great opportunity for the communities to come out for something positive, to meet you guys, to meet your team, uh, to interact and, and, and to come together for, for something good. You know, so many times in government, only time they hear about us in the news is when something doesn't go right. But I, I know how hard your team is working behind the scenes to improve this county and, and we wanna support that. So, uh, not, not to go on too long, but if there's anything we can do to help, um, anybody in the room, please connect with me, PA Treasury is here to support, um, and we appreciate your time.
I, I think the first thing I would direct is, um, uh, Mr. Hagerty to, uh, look at any unclaimed property that Dolphin County may be in receipt of and start the claims process immediately. We don't wanna let any monies that are out there that may be owed as a result of, you know, there's a number, I, I worked for the PA Treasury Department and actually the five-two-nine program for about eleven years. Um, and I'm aware, but I, I, I was unaware until you had mentioned it that there may be unclaimed property. So, uh, with that information, we should take immediate action.
With, with Larry's assistance, we've identified almost fifteen thousand dollars in unclaimed property that, uh,
That's great.
Chris Davis is working on claiming.
Love it.
It's awesome.
Right, that, that's number one, number two, obviously, um, you have a lot of kids, um, had all of them enrolled in the five-two-nine program. Um, you know, it used to be a guaranteed savings program, uh, where matched to tuition inflation increases, which was great. Uh, but now even the, uh, the five-two-nine investment program, uh, for those out there that, you know, don't know the details, you can even save if you wanna send your kids. It, it could be used for, you know, private school, daycare, other opportunities that, you know, may require savings. Uh, I know the county offers direct, um, contributions from paycheck to be able to be used directly for that savings. Uh, and any planning we can do in order to try to help the, you know, employees for post-secondary education. Uh, expenses continue to go up, and unless we're trying to make some level of concerted effort to try to save for that, I'm, I'm, you know, it's more debt that's gonna be compiled to both parents and the children related to that. So, uh, all, all great programs, and I quite frankly wanna commend the Treasurer Stacy Garrity, who has done a, uh, an outstanding job of keeping politics out of her role. Uh, maximizing investments, um, in, uh, both the areas that she has oversight, control, and, um, I think she's done an outstanding job of, of, you know, sort of setting a bar high. And I, I worked for both Catherine Baker Noah and Barbara Hafer, uh, back in the day, but, um, uh, certainly have been impressed by this treasurer. And we appreciate you being here to let us know about these various programs that our community can take advantage of. And I, as one Commissioner, would be willing to host an event, uh, for unclaimed property to, uh, allow for residents to be able to come in and check.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I wanna echo those comments by my colleague and, uh, say a special thank you to Treasurer Garrity for, for proactive approach here in getting this message out there. We've always heard over the years that there was monies available, but I'm looking at these, the number of records in Harrisburg City, two hundred thousand, over forty-five million dollars. Hershey, four point six million. Humblestown, four point one million, those are real dollars that our residents, as you said, could use at this time. I'd also like to ask our staff if they could put this information out there on our Facebook page and, and on, on X formerly Twitter, get that out in the, any media that can get these, these numbers out there. I mean, this is something that could really help our residents at this time. Uh, and this, uh, debunks the, the old, uh, phrase by former President Ronald Reagan who said, "The nine scariest words were, we're from the government and we're here to help." And, and you are actually showing, uh, under Treasurer Garrity's leadership, uh, that, that is not, that is actually something that is true and is beneficial to our residents, so thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Booker, thank you for being here today and thank you for, for sharing this. Uh, I think all three of us have pretty much made it clear that an event would be something we would be open to, to hosting here at the county. And, um, I think working with our Chief Clerk's Office to schedule that, I think it could be a really cool opportunity for the public to interface with your office and, uh, for us to, you know, use our contacts to push that out there. If there's any social media that you have about the PA five-two-nine campaign, or the Keystone Scholars Campaign, or PA ABLE, or any of these things that you're doing that, uh, we could further for our constituents by sharing it on our social media platforms. So if you have, you know, pre-made media that, uh, you know, graphics and stuff that we can share on our platform, we would love to do that. Or if there's a post that you shared that we could go reshare, please keep us posted on that, let our Chief Clerk know, because we would love to amplify these programs, especially since they're to the benefit of our constituents. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. Good to see you again, Larry.
Right, at this time, we're on to Salary Board. Fay Fisher.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Uh, there are no changes to the Salary Board Packet, so it stands as presented at last week's meeting.
We need a vote for Human Services and Solid Waste Management and Recycling, correct?
Correct.
Do I have a motion for items A and B?
Second.
I have a motion from Commissioner Hartwick and a second from Controller Bateman, any discussion?
Yeah, I wanna take a moment and, uh, thank our Solid Waste Management Recycling Director Kelly McGonell. Um, I've asked my oversights where there's areas, uh, if they feel their positions that are no longer necessary, as we're in budget constraints, please feel free to bring those forward to us. And she has found one for elimination, and, uh, that's a, a good steward of our, our public dollars, and I wanna thank her for her leadership.
Great, any other discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Uh, for the Personnel Packet?
Uh, there were a few changes to the Personnel Packet, those changes have been communicated to the Board.
Any questions on the Personnel Packet?
I make a motion, we accept the Personnel Packet as presented.
I will second that.
Any discussion?
Yeah, just verifying that these are all within budgeted numbers for two thousand and twenty-five.
Yes, they are.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Budget and Finance Director Chris Davis?
Morning. We'll give you a quick update as far as unclaimed property, we did file our paperwork about a week and a half ago, and it's been, I don't wanna use the wrong term, but approved by the Treasury, so that's in process. And I will give them kudos, the county has done this, I think, annually, and it's been a few years since I've personally done it. It's a very streamlined process from the last time, so it's gotten much easier for anyone out there looking to do it. Um, I have no changes to the Investment Report that was sent out yesterday. There was one addition to the PO Packet that had Oversight Approval, um, that was distributed this morning for the MT-three for the card readers. Other than that, the Packet is ready for your approval.
Do we have a motion for the Purchase Order Packet?
Still moved.
Second.
Uh, moved by Commissioner Priest, seconded by Commissioner Hartwick, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Chief Clerk's Report, Mr. Hagerty.
Good morning, I have four things for you today. First of all, I just wanted to thank Vince and Jessica for all their hard work to make the State of the County Event, uh, go off without a hitch last night. Um, as you've noticed, we do love America so much in Dolphin County, we do the Pledge of Allegiance twice. Um, I also want to congratulate Bob, uh, Bob Evans, who with the approval of today's Personnel Packet has been named our Permanent IT Director. Uh, he'd been serving in an interim capacity, uh, and we're excited to see him move into the role permanently, so congratulations, Bob. Uh, thirdly, um, I have shared this privately, but thought it was worth sharing publicly. Prior to accepting my position, uh, for quite some time, I've been a volunteer with the Broad Street Market, uh, and for the last year or so, I've served as the Chair. Um, and over the course of some of the financial difficulty the, the market has faced, we applied for a whole variety of grants from different entities, one of which is Dolphin County. And, uh, when I accepted this position, I notified the Commissioners of this pending grant that I co-applied for along with the City of Harrisburg, uh, and put in place an abstention memo. Uh, essentially refusing myself from any involvement in the entire gaming grant award process. So, uh, I bring this up because I've received a couple of questions from folks asking me, you know, when are the gaming grants coming out, or what's the latest? Uh, and the answer is, I don't know, because I have designated Vince as being responsible for navigating that process for us, the county. So, um, whether it comes up internally, in executive session, anywhere, anytime gaming grant information is discussed, I step out of the room. Um, and, uh, I just wanted to share that publicly because I realized even though we internally knew that, um, that abstention memo is not public. So, um, thanks for bearing with me on that explanation, I thought it was important from, uh, an ethics standpoint to avoid even the appearance of a conflict of interest. Lastly, we've got some opioid remediation grants on the agenda for Commissioners' consideration later today, and I wanted to invite, uh, Randy Jaeger to come up and give a brief overview of the grants and the selection process and, and some of the great work that's been happening in this space.
Thank you so much. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
So, I'm very excited to be here this morning to talk about the Cycle Two of the Opioid Remediation Grant. And Cycle Two was supposed to run July one of two thousand and twenty-four through June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-five. We were granted an extension, um, many counties were granted an extension appropriately because the Pennsylvania Trust last fall, um, did not agree with some of, uh, the counties across the state in their selection of specific projects. And one of our projects, uh, we entered an appeal, and, uh, we, uh, did that with a huge team of help. But, um, we won that appeal, and it was a critical appeal to win because it involved, um, services and supports and women's advocates through the Bethany Renew Program for mothers with opioid use disorder. And, um, and their children, it's not just the parent, there's lots of wrap, wrap services for the entire family. And we were very, uh, fortunate to win that appeal, I will say sadly, there were other counties across the state that, that, that were not so fortunate, and they had some really, I think, fantastic programs. So, moving forward, that delayed all of our current applications because now we go into a pre-approval process, if you will, with the Pennsylvania Trust. Now, even with that pre-application process with them, it doesn't guarantee in the end they will not disagree with our selections. So, it, that still is concerning, but we want to be very upfront about what we wanna fund. So, I just wanna thank all of our providers who are in the back of the room who've been very patient this entire year, we're, we're now in the last quarter, although we have.
They're smiling, they're not looking.
We have an extension through December of two thousand and twenty-five so that these, uh, valuable resources can be used. But, to be quite honest, they've been providing these services all along. And so, um, they're doing it, um, on a shoestring in many cases, and so I'm just really excited to be here today. Just a brief overview about our process, we have a, a pre-application opportunity for any applicant to come in and, and talk with us about what they wanna do, what we, where we think in Exhibit E their project might fit. Um, and just some details about how to apply specific support on, you know, the areas of the application that just simply need filled out correctly. Um, and letters of support and that kind of thing. Um, so we do that, and then we, um, receive all the grants back, and then we have a, an awesome Advisory Board who meets with every single applicant, asks questions. We have a dynamic dialogue about the services and supports, and then those applications are really determined in priority order. So, um, based on our numbers of women and children, um, that still is a priority for services because of the impacts on our infants here in Dolphin County, hundreds of children, uh, born with substances in their system, both legal and illegal substances. So, that still remains a priority, and I just wanna point that out, and I'm certainly happy to answer any questions.
I have no questions, I just, I just wanna thank everyone in the room who does this important work, and, uh, thank you for your commitment to serve our county. I think, uh, much of what you do is behind the scenes and goes unseen and unnoticed by, you know, the general population, but it's critical to care for these people who, you know, have a disease of addiction. And, uh, and the impact that that not only has on them as an individual, but, uh, their community and those who surround them. And, uh, you're part of that healing and making whole process, and, uh, we're incredibly grateful to you, and thank you for participating in this program, and we're, we're sorry that it's taken some time to get these dollars out the door, but we're. but we're incredibly thankful for your work. It's certainly not in any way indicative of our thanks and gratitude for the important work you do.
Mind if I just make a couple of go- First, I want to thank Randy Jess Kemmer, who's in the crowd, and our high-paid advisory board, who obviously puts in a great deal of time. They are unpaid, by the way. And quite frankly, I want to thank them for being leaders. I remember when this process was negotiated, there was no mechanism by which we get these dollars out the door. And in cases past, the state has, particularly with the tobacco money, been the recipient, and quite frankly, used it for every other reason besides cessation. So we battled really hard to ensure, you know, at the table that these dollars were going to be driven out to local nonprofit organizations and treatment providers and folks that are engaged directly with being able to address substance abuse disorder. So both the process, the board members, and for the recipients and the partners, we're really grateful for your patience, the time that you spent, the diligence and the expertise, you know, from Chuck Mizetti, Dr. Erica Pinkney, and I know Danny Albert. And then we also have Kristen Varner and Randy Jaeger that make out that five-member board. I know that the process has been replicated throughout the state, and we appreciate you being leaders. I think this has only been established now for two years, but I don't know. I guess replication is as high as form of flattery, and we appreciate getting a process that has been thorough, fair, ethical, and one that has resulted in money getting out right. Thank you.
And Commissioner Hartwick, I want to take a moment and thank you for the role that you played during negotiations of this with the Governor's Office and other entities, enabling us to get the amount of money that came in, which benefits so many people here in the county and elsewhere. And also, I agree Jessica Kemmer was in here and answered all the questions that I had during her presentation. So it was good to know. And Randy, you wear a lot of hats here at the county, so thank you for all that you've obtained.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you, Randy.
Thank you, Randy, and thank you, Commissioners. That concludes my report, unless you have any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Haggerty? Hearing none. Solicitors' report, Mr. Owens.
Thank you, Commissioner Douglas. All matters requiring board action have been reviewed and approved for action by the Solicitor's Office.
Any questions of Mr. Owens? We have 57 items before us today for matters requiring board action. Do we have a motion for all 57, or would we like to pull it?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second that motion for all 57.
All right. We have a motion by Commissioner Hartwick for items one through 57 for approval, seconded by Commissioner Priest. Any questions or any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We have former business before us. Do we have a motion for former business? I'll move for a motion for former business. Do we have a second?
I'll make a motion under former business for the appointment of Daniel Albert, Dr. Erica Pinkney, and Kareem Morsey to the opioid remediation advisory board. Term expires December 31, 2027.
I think I made a motion, but you can go ahead and make a motion, and I'll second it. How about that?
I'll second it.
No, it's all right. It's all right. We'll give the motion to Commissioner Priest, and I will second the former business. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, there is. Obviously, I was just asking, you know, based upon sort of the makeup of the board. I know that the board has talked about opening up applications for various boards. This board has been in existence for just about two years, not even enough time to really get its feet underneath us. And quite frankly, today, we are voting to remove, and what I believe is the most valuable, one of the most valuable, all of our members of our board are valuable, but as it relates to a system knowledge and perspective, I know Chuck Mizetti, formerly of Mizetti and Sullivan, no longer associated with Mizetti and Sullivan, has more of a direct experience and knowledge related to both systems, gaps in services, where their conflicts may exist, levels of service, you know, issues that exist related to providers, rates. Actually, our board relies on Chuck in a major way for, you know, both experience, background, knowledge. And I just want to ask, why are we replacing him? Can I ask?
We had a number of people from the community apply, and this is an individual who, it's my understanding, it's fully qualified for the role. And am I correct? I think our discussion last week was, the reason this was tabled was on term limits. Is that correct? These terms were done for these three members, correct? That they had come to the end of their term?
Yeah, the three incumbents' terms all expired December 31, 2024.
Certainly, this nomination is not indicative of anyone's, you know, lack of qualifications or lack of input. I think it's more a commitment to ensure that community members from, you know, external that apply get representation on these boards. That's at least my reasoning for supporting this.
And do we have any conversations, you know, with the board members just about sort of the makeup of the board? And sort of tell me how we'd select who was getting replaced and who was not? Because ultimately, these folks were all appointed at the same time. I know I've not been engaged in any level of conversation about sort of the board makeup, you know, sort of the balances, the strengths and the weaknesses. I don't know if Randy was engaged. And again, I'm just trying to figure out from a rational perspective how we made those kind of determinations of all equal terms, all on the same time, you know, all obviously could be made to come off. How we made the determination that one person comes off versus another?
It's my understanding that each of these board members carries a particular specialty, from what I remember in my review of that. And for the sake of ultimately keeping much of the integrity of this board, but also wanting to prioritize community involvement, that was the decision that was made to go on the agenda.
So first of all, it's difficult to find a provider, represent a provider that doesn't have a conflict. Mr. Mizetti is retired. I was just wondering, so Mr. Morsey would be considered a provider?
I believe that's my understanding.
I thought he worked for the council state governments.
I'd have to go into my notes, but I believe he's qualified for that role. I believe that question was asked and answered.
Again, I'm just trying to figure it, because I was, we didn't have this conversation. I was not made aware of it when I asked Randy and when I asked folks why was somebody removed versus another and what categories, because I raised the issue last week of term limits, and each person had been on for two years. I just wanted to know what category Mr. Morsey fits into and why, you know, why we chose one person over another? Because I don't know if the council state governments would be constituted as a provider. That's all I would try to gain clarification on. If we're trying to follow the tracks that were set up by statute or by the piece, council state governments is an organization that supports local governments, but I don't think they provide any services.
I was under the impression he's qualified.
Again, just clarification that I'm trying to find out, because if we're going to follow sort of what's been defined and set by the statute-
I'd like to make a motion for recess.
Second.
Back for reconvening, Board of Commissioners meeting. I'd like to make a motion for the expansion of the opioid remediation advisory board.
Excuse me, Commissioner. I need to state for the record that on Wednesday, March 26, the Commissioners held an executive session to discuss, and it secured the advice of legal counsel on board appointments.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion for the expansion of our opioid remediation advisory board by one member.
Second.
Any discussion?
The only discussion would be, first of all, I'm grateful. I just don't know if we want to get in a position of the tie. Usually, there is an odd and even. It may offer another opportunity for an expanded community member.
Sure.
So if we could just expand it by two, if I could make a friendly amendment.
Commissioner Douglas, I'm sorry. So you'll have to put that on an agenda.
Next, yes.
Next week.
Understood.
You're voting on the item.
We're voting on the item to be on the agenda next week.
Correct.
Yes. So an amendment to the item that I am in favor of as the one who carried the motion for it to be from one to two. So now we will entertain two. Are you okay with that in a second?
I will amend my second to approve that.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Given the appointments before us today and the pending appointments for the future, are we in favor of these three individuals?
Aye.
Well, do we need another motion?
Oh, actually, do we have a motion on the floor? I apologize. Do we need any more discussion of that motion? We have a motion in a second, I believe. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. Obviously, new business will be back for next week, but any new business? Commissioners' discussion and actions, Commissioner Hartwick.
After that little interlude, I'm just wanting to first collect myself and thank our staff last night for the State of the County. I'd like to thank the folks that are here related to opioid remediation. And I'd also, you know, certainly like to thank all the crowd that has participated in an open process. That, quite frankly, I think you saw a level of negotiation today that I think could result in adding more qualified people to boards. And I think that level of cooperation should be commended by the members of the chair, vice chair, and members of this board. And I think more minds and ensuring that we've got the appropriate level of responses may be better than fewer. So I want to thank my fellow board members for their willingness to not ignore that request.
Certainly, Commissioner Priest.
I want to follow up Commissioner Hartwick's comments on both topics. The first one, last night's State of the County was another rousing success. Our staff that put in countless hours preparing here on the fourth floor, as well as the Economic Development Department under George Connor. The work that they put in really, really makes this event a success each year. Over 310 people in attendance. I want to thank the media that was there last night covering us. I saw Mr. Roxbury, individuals from Penn Live were there, as well as Tom Russell from CBS 21, everyone's favorite weatherman. And I asked him how the weather weenies were doing, his two dogs, and he said they're doing well, his family's doing well. But the reason I'm bringing that up is because when Tom Russell and other area individuals who work for the media, television media especially, show up at these community events, these county events, and he served last night as emcee, he's doing this as a volunteer. We didn't pay him. And other individuals that have been there in the past, Valerie Pritchett, she's been there a couple of times as well. These folks are giving of their time back to the community for those events and back to the county for that event. So very, very appreciative of them taking the time. And oh, by the way, he had to be back at the state at the studio last night, prepare for the evening news. So he spent several hours with us and then went to his real job. So I want to give a shout out to him and the other individuals who gave their time last night to cover that event. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you to everyone who made State of the County happen and all those who came out and all those who viewed online. I was thankful to see that it was live streamed for those in the county to be able to see just as we continue to make county government available to the people. I was excited to see that that was an opportunity for people to tune in to State of the County, thank our I T team for making that happen, and to all the people who sent out invites and organized things to make that come together. I want to recognize our chief public defender, Mary Clapp. She's representing us at the Capitol today. I was with her early this morning. I'll be back there later today. I'm proud of her efforts and competency in advocating for funding for our P D's office. If you don't know, public defenders in the state are not funded by the state. They're funded by the counties largely. They just recently gave some money toward that, but it is really a drop in the bucket when it comes to the need. And often, that is a big challenge within the criminal justice system when, you know, you need representation, and you have a public defender who's carrying 200 cases, and you're one of 200, and they don't know your case because they have so much to hold. And so that tends to lead to burnout, to then high turnover, to then your case getting handed from-
I am a 23-year, um, well, first of all, I'm a Harrisburg native, born and raised here. And I bring 23 years of experience to the board advisory board for the opioid remediation grant. I am licensed psychotherapist, not only in Pennsylvania, but in the state of New Jersey. I've worked over, I'm not even going to all the different programs, but all throughout Dolphin County, my research has been done around adjudicated youth in this county. Um, I enjoy working with the board and this was never about who you know, what you know, but I earned my way to be here. So I just wanted to go on record and make everybody well aware that I'm more than qualified to be here. I serve as a clinical director at Keystone Human Services, but I do not represent Keystone. I represent Pinkney Professional Counseling and Black Therapists of Central PA. So I just wanted to let you all know.
Thank you.
And if anyone has any questions, you can check me out on LinkedIn. I have a website, Pinkney Professional Counseling, and check out Black Therapists of Central PA. And it's an honor to serve.
Thank you for your service.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Pamela Parsons, City of Harrisburg. Um, mostly today, I'd like to just say thank you. Um, thank you to, uh, Commissioner Douglas for his continued support of the Bhutanese families and for facilitating that trip for, uh, folks to be able to see their families. I'd also like to thank, uh, the, our chief clerk, uh, Mr. Haggerty, for being transparent about his relationship with the Broad Street Market and with the gaming grants and for taking the time to say publicly what was already happening behind the scenes. I'd also like to thank, um, Randy Jaeger for her, um, kind of overview today about the opioid grants and the grantees and the final outcome of, uh, last year's appeal process. That was very helpful. Uh, and I'd also like to thank, uh, Dr. Pinkney for being here and being able to speak, um, having the opportunity to be able to speak to her own qualifications. That is very important, which does bring me to the little kerfuffle that has happened both last week and this week around this, um, particular appointment to the, appointments to the opioid remediation board. I appreciate and am grateful and thankful for the way in which you have, as Commissioners, uh, expanded into adding more community members. But just as Dr. Pinkney was here, I think it would have been nice to have had the other two people here as well, um, Mr. Uh, Mr. Morrissey and, um, Mr. Albert to be also here and talk about their qualifications and be able to get, um, direct questions from you as Commissioners, questions that you might have. And finally, another note of thanks, I would like to echo, um, what Ona Asai said about the last, um, board, prison board meeting. I too appreciated, um, Deputy Warden Latonya Ray and, uh, Mary Bateman in bringing those, um, proposals forward, having people talk about their expertise and how they might see that, how they might see reentry, um, appear if, if they were given that. And that's the kind of transparency that we need and I really appreciate that. Thank you. Oh, and one more thing, did any of you get your photos with Jerry Rice?
No, no. We were bummed about it. No, I'm just kidding. Yeah, yeah. We thought he was coming to see us. That's what we thought. We thought he was coming for our speeches. We were like, oh, he heard we were giving speeches, so he decided to come.
Take your time.
With that, I want to run in, there's another thing. This is Mr. and Mrs. Harris and this is their son Derek.
Yep. Um, if I, can I just?
Sure.
Thank you.
Good to see you, Martin.
Good morning.
Nice to meet you.
Now, we have three minutes. I wanted to get right into it. This is, I mean, we need, we need help. Um, we're looking for advocacy for my son Derek. Um, Derek is level three autism, um, at the severity level where basically, um, if he's not cared, he would not, he would not be able to live here, um, as far as feeding, take care of himself. Um, he's at, um, we went to court recently, received guardianship and he is, um, been labeled as intellectually disabled. So, um, he's not able to, by state law, function. Uh, we've been, since 2023, had a issue that we were trying to resolve. Uh, we were in Lingustown Middle School, Middle, uh, Middletown, no, Lingustown School, middle school. And he was receiving very, very good care there. And when we went to Central Dolphin East High School, immediately we noticed the difference, progression in education, and we noticed safety issues. Um, scratches and accidents, bruises. Um, and most recently, uh, in February, he somehow ran into a wall and cut his lips on, you know, with his braces. So it was at that point, um, we kind of said we, we had enough. So since 2023, we were asking to remove Derek so that we could pay for a private school. We were denied a letter to actually have him removed. They said that they could handle it. We've had met many, um, school meetings and in the meetings themselves, they admitted that they just didn't have the staff. Sometimes my wife would have to, uh, go, uh, take off work to pick up Derek, cause they didn't have staff available. Um, and we have, uh, met with the case manager this year after he turned 18, said we're going to remove him and we need help getting an emergency consolidated waiver. That's what we're asking for. We were, we received an email that because we were taking him out, that he should go back to school if he wants to receive services, but it's a matter of safety at this point.
30 seconds.
We need help. Uh, we need help getting that consolidated waiver immediately.
First of all, um, can I, can I just make a motion that we, uh, suspend the time limit for this particular case?
Second.
All right, thank you.
All in favor?
Go ahead.
All in favor?
Aye.
Welcome. Um, and, uh, the, the first thing I would ask, two things, the consolidated waiver, uh, has been adjusted, uh, to, for the first time, uh, in history, under the Shapiro administration, that actually allows for us not to fulfill, the way it used to work, we had to fulfill all the needs of the people that are in the waiver before we were able to add people. Right now, we're going through a process that we actually are able to prioritize, like higher needs as a result of some of the changes that have been made to the waiver, uh, related to the regulations over the past year. So, um, I'd love to be able to follow up and have this conversation with our, our staff and figure out what, if any, uh, relief we could provide to you and your family immediately. And then the process by which we could, um, you know, identify both resources and, um, you know, slots that may be available based upon his level of need. And I'd also ask just really quick, um, uh, we happen to have the former Department of Education Secretary right to my right, uh, who, um, may be able to fill us in on maybe a little bit of, uh, you know, additional information related to school districts, what you may be eligible for, and a little bit of guidance from that perspective as well.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner. Um, after this ends, I'd like to get your contact information in conjunction with Randy. Um, both on the human services side, I can also connect you with folks at the State Department of Education's Office of Special Education and the Capital Area Intermediate Unit who specialize in this type of work.
I appreciate it.
We'll, we'll follow up right away.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for being here.
Take care, young man.
Anyone else for public comment?
Commissioners, I believe you may need to reinstate the rule.
Yeah, we'll reinstate the, the, the time limit to three minutes.
We'll be quick.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Jennifer Strassenberg. I'm the Director of the Renew Program through Bethany Christian Services. I just wanted to say a special thank you, um, for the invitation to be here today. Um, we are recipient of the opioid remediation grant and I just wanted to say thank you. Thank you to Randy Jaeger for all the assistance, as well as the, um, Dolphin County Drug and Alcohol Commission, Jessica Kemmerer. Um, we've just received a lot of support and we were part of that appeal process and couldn't have gone through that without, uh, Randy and her team. And, um, we're so appreciative to be able to offer the services here in Dolphin County to women that are, um, pregnant and have a history of substance use. And so we just wanted to say thank you and, and it was enjoyable being here today. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Moving to second. We adjourn.
Thank you.